Uh, the, um, yeah, yeah. That's your line. And it sounds like a lot of people are going to be. It's funny because I had Rachel in there and she talked about when they got too far. I didn't say anything. Nobody asked me, so I said they didn't have to. So I didn't. They said this is extra weather.
I think we all are. I'm kidding.
Yeah.
No, I am. I usually don't pay attention to things. It'll be less, uh, it's not really as stressful. It'll be less stressful. I mean, it's.
It's less stressful. I hope you know what that means. Yeah. Yeah, I know.
What helped you move? It's like, um. I could imagine flying. Yeah. It's, it's one thing helping to say move. You know, count away.
I always. I'm so sorry.
I know. I, I told you this.
She's me.
Said you were fine.
I know, I warned him about the wall.
Yeah. Yeah. There is three. I have my chair, I have a crazy chair too, so. And they're so small, so I have a bush. My nerves are shattered today. I have no idea. Every time I do this, I'm so down. I can't help you. Why are you so getting nervous? You know.
It is. Just the short.
That's right. And I don't have to worry about, well, the other thing is kind of the rest of the side. We're doing this and this thing will go. Because somebody was wanting to like, oh, my God. So what? Better, but I don't have to worry about the many people into the.
Oh, thank you.
And on your chair, I have Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
You're very welcome. Stacy. It's likely.
As many people as possible would have.
I, I do so too.
I would take it.
The guy who built this, every time he comes in, hey, it's Laura Bill. He always says, you know, I built that. I'm like, oh, yeah, I know.
You're building the guy's?
Yeah, the guy who built these, yeah. Some corrections of Black America, I don't know, thirty-five years later.
Pretty welcome.
Yeah, it is.
Um, Yvonne, someone might have already pointed out. There's more questions on the yearly schedule.
I, I have corrected ones at your desk. But with the title, so each of you has the correction. You're being scheduled. September third, not September eighth.
Well, the one I saw was June.
Yeah, and June's also had, uh, it had, uh, two things. Because last year, June was, um, the June meeting was, uh, June team meeting, yeah. So. Yeah, or that one had the juicy hours.
Keller, Keller's not here.
Oh. Okay, okay.
Are they gonna do?
They want, they want to do that.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna. Yeah.
You have to go to our website now. And then vote for the meeting. Did you get your?
I have to, uh, I have to.
So. The jet will first.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Great. I am satisfied. Do you mind gardens already?
Really?
Yeah. Hey, how are you? Can I say, can I put this right here?
Look at. Where are our signs?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I know, I think I can do that. So you're actually running.
Yeah.
This is, this is, I've tried, I've tried. Even, even like, even some make it.
And there's a long question.
Wait, we're trying.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's true. Recording in progress.
Oh. Yvonne, are you good?
Yes, we're recording.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's, uh, seven oh two. We're in the City Hall chambers. Go on, you're on the mic. Um, all right, Yvonne, can you call roll?
Yes. George.
Here. Here.
McRoy.
Here.
Keever. Eric Hodgin. There, Houston. Glenn.
All right, uh, well, now we'll go ahead and stand for the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, um, you, Yvonne, you want new council?
If they would like that, please remain standing. And I'll move over a little bit closer to this area. So, because like, if somebody may be taking photographs. And, um, we'll just go ahead and go repeat after me. And you're welcome to use your cheat sheets, because that's what they're there for. So if you'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, I'm happy to hear that.
So solemnly and willingly swear.
So solemnly and willingly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the State of Oregon. The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Charter of the City of Sharon.
Charter of City Sharon.
And the ordinance, ordinances of the City of Sharon.
Or the ordinances of the City of Sharon.
And that I will faithfully and honestly perform the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
And I faithfully and honestly perform the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, so next we'll have the, uh, election of Council President for twenty-five. Um, we have the process kind of laid out. If I can, uh, go ahead and open the floor for any nominations. Uh, if anyone wants to nominate. Any?
I'd like to nominate Jim Bussel.
Is there another person? Any other nominations? All right, go on, Jim. Well, I, I didn't say it on here, but you accept.
Yes.
All right, um, well, then I'll, uh, call for a roll call then to elect Jim as the Council President.
Buckle.
President.
McRoy.
Yes.
Keever. Hodgin. Yes, Houston. Glenn.
I think you're supposed to say I, but okay.
We're gonna go in unanimous.
Yeah. All right, so next, uh, issues or releases to the agenda, uh, Yvonne, do we have?
Yes.
Oh, it'll, oh, right. Okay. Okay, so no presentation for famous study by Keller. It sounds like they're gonna come back. Next meeting there.
And Mayor, Mayor, I make a suggestion.
Yep.
That, uh, community grants be perhaps being or they're needing maybe after presentations. So that the people in the comments that would like to know what we're up to.
Do we have anybody in the?
Uh, yeah, we, um, we've got Nicole here for two of them. And I know that there's, uh, some on.
Oh, right. So the award. Yeah, so we can move now. One. Two. Yes. Three, I guess we could do that. We just crossed on H three. We want that H three. All right, so next we have. First of all, the Congress. Why did you get any on them?
No.
Okay, sorry, um, so the only one we have, uh, so, uh, Joe, you will add from up.
Sure. Um.
Yes, Joe, let me go ahead and meet down.
Hi, uh, Joe Lalea, West Black Experience. Um, so I did attend the shared qualification meeting on the, I believe it was the ninth. It disclosed that essentially that the City of Sharon will receive ninety percent of the arbothones. So I'm just curious which project will be prioritized and which will be sidelined. Just to figure out some more, um, after those projects. Unless, unless that's misinformation that I heard. On the chair, I'm in case of a.
We're still looking at our options. I don't spend those funds, but in case the O P do have to contract them, you know, the insertion people. That may be cost to. I will read the. Thank you. Great. Moving on. Uh, our first presentation is from the Midland Valley Council of Governments Services. Um, we have Scott Dadsen, the Executive Director, and Laura Conroy. If you all want to come up. I believe we have a third person. We do have a third person.
Uh, yeah, I've got with me, uh, I'm Scott Dadsen, I'm the Executive Director. We moved the chair back. I have to walk off the back. Um, we're the Executive Director at the Midland Valley Council of Governments. We, um, y'all have been a member of the Congress for a very long time. Probably since, uh, we've been six weeks, probably about. Um, but I have with me Laura Conroy, who you see in the City Hall a lot. And Amber McGee back here. Amber is our, uh, Finance Director and a recovering city manager like myself. So, um. Those of us who have served in the chair, as they know. Um, so we're here to talk to you about three things. There's, there's three things sitting in front of you both. First is, um, interim support services. So what we've tried to do, and that's really where Laura and Amber have really been, uh, on staff. And it, uh, popped two pages and then down into what's called the scope of work. You already have an agreement with us. Every year, you folks sign an agreement with us for services. So we provide planning services, the rent management for you. But we also do other things, financial, administrative, and, uh, manager, uh, executive recruitment services and things like that. So right here, what I want to talk about first, make sure you all are aware, is a scope of work that we've worked out really with Kai and, uh, Stacy, uh, and try, and Yvonne, and trying to help you all, uh, move through, uh, an interim period and to get settled, uh, with some projects. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know where you are in, in your, I just, I know it's the third bench for you. But what we've done is we've spent, uh, quite a few days with your staff, working through various projects and issues. Have been around since, uh, your arbothone issue, uh, trying to help you all get through that and work through those processes to assist your staff. Our job there, best way to say it is to be that actual set of hands that helps people get through it. We have companies that have, you know, good people here. Um, and, uh, our job is to help them do what they're doing. Cause you, if you're down a few hands. So, uh, our job is to try to help out with that. And that's what that scope of services is. I believe it's an up to, is that correct? So if we don't expend hours and we don't do a lot, then, then you're not charged with that. So, uh, that is the way we recover costs for our organization. So, um, let's stop there first. Any questions? Kai, have you missed anything, um, that you wanted me to highlight with this?
No.
Yes, sir.
Well, I have a question. So, um, if I give the math correctly, that's eleven thousand dollars in water for three months. Your market, we're carrying for about twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Up to that amount. Uh, so what we've done is tried to estimate, uh, a week with post. Now, that doesn't mean we're there all the time. And it doesn't mean we do all those hours. It's at the direction of Kai and Yvonne as far as how much work we're, we're doing or not doing, uh, that you posted.
I'm concerned about the cost, would it extend beyond that?
You have a general services contract with us. So what we also included in the package is what our hourly rates are for everything that we disagree with. If you choose those, those issues. So it's really, again, it's at the control of your current interim. We work with your staff to try to manage that workflow and those finances for you. What we tried to do here is give you an idea about how much it costs if it was, let's see, ten hours plus ten hours. You know, twenty hours worth of work with that week. Up till now, it's been fairly busy. It will probably scale back monitoring as we staff. And we're.
Yes.
We're at that point where we can scale back and that'd be us and our staff and Kai and Yvonne as they move forward. And Stacy as they move forward. But we, we did an estimate.
How many hours did you work with that? Was it a thirty of this, um, you should have gotten there.
Well, January's not over yet.
Yeah.
So it's, it's based upon that. Like I said, I think the heavy lift for this particular part of the contract is over. And it may come back up again and depends, depends on how much assistance. But we think a lot of the assistance is in the grant area. And I really take sure this is included out. And you have people doing double duty right now. So, uh, you know, they need to get to other things in their operations and that kind of thing. So sometimes we're filling in the back way to do some things. Um, and just what kind of assistance is needed. Audit, if, uh, budget startup, all the other kinds of things. We're available for you. We're available, even if we did leave this scope of work. You can call us up and say, I need three hours of this. You have that as a general contract with us. And so we're happy to help. These are areas you're not used to seeing as necessary. We record these, our planning services and so forth. If that makes sense. Yes, sir.
I do. We will stop right at the start date of January sixth. I know that Ian and Laura are here regularly. And that part of this service, so are you really starting in? Did you get it started on January sixth?
This was just to give a description of the support services administratively. We're taking time on it. We'd actually been helping you prior to that. Laura happened to be here. Um, Liam is under, this is just on the administrative services. So we wanted to give you an idea of what the scope of duty is here. So that, we have an understanding with your management team as to what they expect out of us. We're ready for you when you call.
I took it out. We just have to switch it. Full end of, uh, this, oh, full end of year, uh, beta three, June, November five. So I came up with a different bill of course than my list to you. Laura, I came up with the sixty eight thousand, the seven hundred fifty dollars, which is just a, we're even on that. But I remember it was longer paying, uh, having salary, or for taxes or furs or all of this. And I took her salary divided by fifty two, and it was, uh, two thousand five hundred eighty dollars a week. So we had the money. And even if you go full board, go all the way up to three for June. I know you're not expecting that, but.
We're not. And like I said, I think a lot of the heavy lift has been done right now. Kai, anything else you're mad at?
Specifically, that might have been me. It's all programs that I have, like. We, that's the spirit. I don't think that. Ever since then, I feel like I'm a great person. I'm just trying to do that. So we have a lot of new staff. We've talked to the staff and they're actually, I have a bunch of crazy people. I don't have these. So I've gone with. Laura has been great. She's helped me, uh, like, uh, City Hall record. Amber's been helping me. Other department heads. They're having a lot of this training and software, just into a. That we just try to, try to get through right now. And we got it. But I just. But if we get back on track, we're gonna have to put in, I call it restart. We're just gonna have to have it restart. Until we can lock up. That's just, that's the only way I can. Is to have my first couple of hours. That's half the schedule. We ordered hours. And we have to have workers inside. Get it on track. And then I think even if it lasts, uh, it'd be pretty scary.
So, I ask.
Yeah, I see that. And again, we're at the control of management and so we're responding to what management needs. We're not dictating the hours back to you folks. It's just how you see it. Right now, we hit a good spot. So, uh, those will back off for a little bit, but if and when you need us again, you know, you have an idea about what we're dealing with. What that cost structure looks like. So you're not going into this one.
We, 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 we're gonna try to announce something, we're gonna need help. If, uh, we need somebody more than. Whoop, whoop, sorry, we re-. We're definitely. No. Even out as we don't keep it up.
The way your contract works is that it's our ground. Uh, what we're trying to do here is give you an estimate of what we're.
It's going to be necessary.
So if that at least gives you some guidance and, um, Kai, I can play at that with. Everybody gets the limits. And scarcity is the one that drives. So we respect.
So is this, um, a different sum than the actual, um, recruiting that we're using? That's another sum.
That, that's, that's a different process. That's a different thing that you would go through. That is the next thing in this, uh, thing. Do you want me to get that now, or do you have more questions here first?
Yeah, we're going to.
So, uh, then what we did, okay, so you have a bunch of materials based upon how we do our rates and our local service plan and things like that. Just for background information for you folks, so if you have any further questions, you have to, uh, address that. Laura is up here a little bit, so is Liam. I'm a phone call away. Happy to help in any way we can just. Okay, so now the city management recruitment process is a, uh, is a package. And I will tell you that, uh, I've done. Nine or ten, since I've been here, I've done ten recruitments in the valley in the last four years. Uh, these are general, these are member rates. For you folks, I think, I guess we spent a lot more time than that. Doing this stuff. A lot of background. What we do is serve as a third party for you folks to do two things. One, work with you, the councils at this time, and give definition to what expectations you will have of the person you want to recruit for a permanent position. So we go through a process and there's a couple of reasons to go through this. So looking to your attorney here. When the council performs this process to get a public man on defining the profile for the position to include the salary range that you're going to advertise and allows public comment on that. It gives you the authority to keep that process open if you want to, or go into executive session. But you couldn't just go into executive session off the top of this particular position unless you've done the profile and, and over there. Either by off on land, I feel like, I believe that's correct. You are not off. Thank you. I would also want to. So that helps you understand what we're doing. We're doing two things. We're building a profile with you folks. And believe it or not, it sounds like an erroneous, laborious process, but the fact of the matter is, y'all are new. Some of you, I've seen before. But at least as a body, you're new together. And the idea is to make sure that you guys are working together as you go out and recruit your man. First thing that they're gonna do is interview you. They're gonna wanna know where you are. Social media, they're gonna find out where you're at. But they're going to find out how well you work together and how serious you are about where you're going. So that they understand the relationship that they're coming. So we help you go through that process with the guy. Okay? Then we create that profile. We help you understand salary ranges. We do that work with you and get your ad ready and post that ad and go out and recruit. And we're not recruiters per se. I don't have a black book that sits in my back pocket that has a list of, um, potential applicants. Although I've, I've done this and I'm kind of like, nobody plays, or at least a little bit, or have not really gotten that. But we don't do that. We're, we're out there trying to do it in that public process, trying to reach those places that have that professional reach. Uh, according to what you folks want. And then we assist you in getting, lining that up and then setting that process for you as you go. Also by my doing that with you folks, and I'm the one who does this stuff. So I'm a recovering city manager. I spent thirty years being a city manager and doing fog work for about ten. Um. I've got to think about that for a second. I kind of want to go home. I actually live, uh, the house that we used before was the house next to us. I think I wanted to hunt down. Remember that one? So both of my boys are out on their own. Uh, the reason I also want to do that is when we do this, they will call on me. We, we serve as a third party person for you. So you all aren't getting a call. You all aren't getting that. We're doing that, trying to help winnow down what you want. So then when you folks then go into that process of talking to people and looking at resumes and doing that part of your due diligence as a council. We can help the candidates that are self-selecting themselves to do. Does that make sense? So we're not trying to screen them away from you. We're just trying to help them make sense of where you are. So one of the things I'll get to do, I'll get to know why I'm here is I'll read your chart. I'll read your last financial statement. I'll read your budget. I'll look through your goals and objectives. I'll look through your profile. I'll try to know those things, make those available if people ask for things. Unless they're definitely due diligence. We'll, we'll talk to the staff. We'll have that conversation for you folks. Uh, so that way they are calling and they're informing about, and help guide as to, uh, as to whether they might be, you know, where they are in their career. If they're really interested. Stop there.
Yeah, I have a question that happened.
Yeah.
So, um, for, let's say outside of Oregon, International City Managers Association. And the association with Washington, is it one of those, the two that we would, um, if we just, were to go outside of state for a purpose? Those could be the two that we would use or is there any others that we could use or?
There are. We use NeoGov as an application process. We, we accept the applications for you folks and we find that by using that NeoGov, Gov portal, those who are interested in this and serving in these types of capacities are used to that. Their applications are already in there. You know, when we add the extra questions, it's an easier process for them. Their applications are already in there, you know, when we add the extra questions, it's an easier process for them. So NeoGov as a practical matter, does a lot of advertising work, because we'll advertise government jobs, dot com, that kind of thing. Um, so we'll do that, specific to the management business, the business of managing and administering cities. Uh, the league of Oregon cities is a normal, people from outside of Oregon will look at that, okay? Washington, because Washington, California, I don't know, were kind of were sister states, as it were, as far as where uh, city or public administrators move around. I hate to tell you all, when in Oregon, you're not that big a state, but physically you're, you don't have as many cities in your work and population as in the same as two cities. So you get economies of scale when you're working as one of the others, and people have them, so they're, they're. So uh, family, that, so that seems to be your spirit. If the council says, we, we really do want a nation, wants to serve, ICMA is the best place to go. So ICMA becomes where people are looking, are interested in serving. And generally, that's what it is, people inside of Oregon, Washington, this area, who are moving in that direction, want to be part of that. Um, it picks up the regional level, it, it does all of those things, and then we have our website, and your city website, and, you know, we get the word out like that too. So that allows the local uh, person who feels they may want to, wants to. So it, it keeps it open from there all the way up there nationally. But most folks who are looking are interested in here. Does that make sense? Or are, or are you interested, you know, I came here, the, my wife said, we're moving where? So she gets the last call. God knows where I went. But anyways, um, shouldn't say that, I'm scared to death. Um, but nonetheless, uh, people are generally interested in that, if that makes sense. So the process looks a little long, but that's because you're gonna drive it, I'm gonna work with you, if you choose us, to do this service for you folks. Um, and there are others out there that do it, we have, we hold a little pride in not being selected, and something like that, is if you feel you need something else, that's fine, that's council. But if we can help you, and we go through this process together, we'll try to move that at a pace that'll work with you folks as you go through it.
Over the last two cities we worked with, uh, in this process?
Monmouth and Silverdale were my last.
Uh, how many, like, rough estimate, a little hours of talking for this, I mean, you have video.
Well, what I did is, of course, the way my board has directly been pricing, it's a, hour, generally they'll get a lot more hours than your part, and using their staff. Yeah, we have a set rate, and that's back there on, if my pay rate, one, one of three. One of one, so, so that's a rate uh, that is determined by by the directors. The additional charges are different, let's be real clear on the additional charge, advertising costs for yours, background checks. If you wanted me to background check the top five, which I would not recommend, um, that would be six hundred per, per each, so you need to understand, you can control some of those costs. Generally, they'll be backgrounds in our process, until you win it down to who you want to negotiate. Generally, the way it's worked. Um, so we have those prices in there set up on that. If it took me a year, and we went through six months and it didn't work, if you want to go back and keep doing it, outside of the advertising costs and the background checks, and then there's the cost of recruiting them in. So if you bring them in. Pay for hotel, or pay for travel, those are which are customary and normal, you'll have those discussions in this process. But if you do those things, those are the other cost that you have to concern with. So those are outside of this, so the, uh, Mr. Houston, uh, those, those prices are fixed by our board, and they, you know, places here to do this, which they don't make. Our objective is, we, we feel like we can, uh, pretty quick, very proud of the candidates.
It really is maybe. Practory information, can you give us an approximation, sort of shot?
Okay, so our prices are based upon size of the city, so it's no secret, they would have paid around the same issue, so we do it over five thousand is our price. From twenty five hundred to five thousand is the price, and then up to five hundred, it's another one.
So that's fourteen six hundred, figured five thousand. What else are we looking at, I mean, how much is the minutes, hours, of the job?
Well, no hours for me, I'm just gonna give you it all. Yeah, we, we give you this service as a package, except for the advertising costs and the background checks. And any other answer that you look at and say, well, we want you to go do this, you know, some.
So it would be fourteen thousand six hundred?
Yeah.
Then plus any of the advertising costs? And then it sounds like plus six hundred dollars for the background check of the, of the candidate. Well, it sounds like it's customary that you do the background check on the person that you're most likely to hire on, so like three people.
I, I would say yes, that's normal. Um, if you're happy to have seven great candidates, your attorney will advise you on all these things, but um, you know, you could have five good candidates and you're like, I wanna know about them all, because it would be any one of them that were to fit in or. So I mean, the council's gonna drive and ban a lot of this about what you want. So um, we give you an estimate that seems to have worked terrifically on us. Uh, we've had places that have done open processes for candidates. Uh, we have done processes that have done closed, but we like to know what council wants to do on those. Uh, so that we can let candidates know, because some candidates will not apply if they go with one layer of this. So we try to make sure when those decisions come to them, as you block tools, uh, that part of the process.
Really rough math, you're a, you're a math, this is around sixteen thousand, it's like with advertising and one background check, I can do about one.
Yeah, plus what you'll pay for the candidates, if you break them in, you have a normal customer, and folks may say, oh, I gotta do that. Make the candidate four apps. But we, we, there's time for those discussions. And we're not the only ones who do this, we do this on behalf of members. That's why the words say, but if it takes me a hundred hours to deal with it. Then the other thing that I put in here, the last thing, our interim manager service. Um. My objective here is to really help the member. We can create an ad, outside of the cost that it takes to do that. Um, we're just trying to help you get through that part of the process, if you choose to get outside interim, then it can happen in this process. Um, so we can do that and help you, that is just, me as the executive director, maybe some staff, uh, just helping you with that, if that's. Um, I don't charge for my time outside of the recruitment processes. So um, we'll help you try to get there, our objective is to help you with members in that.
Are there people that are going to, if they have one, they're only gonna get six months, eight months?
There are, uh, we maintain a list, um, the process I would use is to advertise it for a very short period, if you were to go that route. Go that route, a very short period of time, we would send feelers out to folks that we know are in the business of doing interim, there's a bout in, in Oregon that do this pretty steadily. Um, and we would reach out to them, uh, we would publicly advertise it, because we're another, uh, something out there that we don't know about, that might come through the process. So uh, we can do that, but that's the way we do it, and then we allow that negotiation to either be a contract between you and that person, if that's what you want. Or they can be hired through us, we have several that work through us, and we've done that interim work, did an annuity, um, just most recently, so that uh, employee worked through us, because they wanted their tax to take. It's, you know, once you're retired and you're in that, that wonder of the world that I will someday be in that after fifty years of doing this. The city mansion's, since I was twenty three. Um, but a, a, that kind of thing, they generally wanted the taxes out. Some people would like to play dead ninety nine game, who knows, uh, they might be part of something that just works into some other part of it, they might be the other consultant. So yeah, there are people out there that do it, uh, we would send feelers out and do that kind of process where you'll bank the calls, put the ad out, and feelers out, make you go through NeoGov, so you have something for anything.
So you mentioned, um, somebody's family was retired, for some time. Would that be a way to describe this pool you're talking about, people, are they mostly retired city managers?
Or they, or they're doing other things. It becomes kind of part of the implement gig economy at that point, uh, for a lot of these folks, they might be doing some side work on this or that. Uh, it's, the silver tsunami has hit our profession just as much as it hit teachers and doctors and policemen and firemen and everything else, and plumbers and people. Folks, you know, it's, it's hit everybody pretty equally, because there's a lot of gig economy out there, that a lot of people do it partially, depends on the retirement, yada, yada, all that kind of thing. Uh, generally, they are. Serve their.
There are people out there who use, or their names wasn't.
Yeah, there probably, there probably are people out there who do it like that. So they might be consultants, they might do this kind of work, and they might spend ten hours doing, uh, helping someone with a comprehensive plan, or they might be, you know, they, they can do other things, so there are.
Uh, can we keep? Um, some of the unknowns we have, I suppose, would be how long it would take to get an interim, because it also costs, it would take. Permanent. Um, if, because I, I know you said it could take six months to get here, if everything on our end went smoothly, as far as to get you up, right, to recruit for a, so you would have to, how long do you think that would take?
Um, we would put the advertisements together, and uh, then uh, before we advertise them, we'll call, ask, uh, Kai, you call in, put together some work sessions with y'all. So we work through the profile, and we'll do that, help you with that work, we'll give you a homework. Should we go over that?
We've had your homework before.
You've had my homework before, so, but, but we'll give you some homework and we'll work through that process as quickly as you can, if y'all are efficient with each other and willing to meet and do those kinds of things. We can get, as soon as we get that app, or you approved it in public, you know, an opportunity to speak up. Uh, then we'll help get that out. So, um, but we can also do the interim, if, if, if you looked at us and said, we'd like to do this, and we want to do something for an hour, start somewhere, we can choose to do that. Um, uh, we can do things salary, so we can work both at the same time. The interim doesn't require you to do a public program, it just requires five.
One interim could, but one interim would be much quicker, obviously, very.
If that'd be much quicker.
Two weeks, you think, maybe a, uh, few weeks, but I think the council would like, also like, to, uh, talk to the potential editor, or, uh, we, we'd like to.
All we're going to do is introduce, if y'all say yes, that's, that's our job, our job is to pick that person. If you looked at us and said, why don't you just come up with how you would do this, and we'll pay whatever you give us, and we'll do it that way, but I don't think we wanna do that. And that person has, has to have a relationship with the community staff, so it's, even in interim perspective, you wanna make sure that, that can go sour on you if you don't do that. I would advise, uh, it could be a sour thing as well. And uh, you know, y'all have a lot of work out there, I would tell you, because I've been involved in all the conversations that have been going on, all the tests, and the rest of it, just being come out here, sound guy, sound phone, sound folks, like, y'all have a lot of work. You just, you're very visible at once, and that's good, that's a good thing, that we don't think that bad, but y'all did.
So, interesting, that's a good question, but what really, if what are, we have a pretty low batting outreach, having run out, run off a lot of cases in the neighborhood. What qualified could have it's not worth it for the last fifteen minutes?
Well, I mean, hell invites people in every day, so, I mean, you know, there's a waiting list, getting in the middle. So I reckon there's a, there's a list of people that'll take on about anything. I'm being libidinal, I'm sorry about that. Uh, but what I would say, what I, what I, what I would say is that there are competent folks out there who always like to serve. Being in interim sometimes can be hard getting or can be easy getting, some people are fixers. It becomes a one count, it wants out. Um, I've been in interim before, so I want it just to be exactly what it is until the new person comes in, then they'll figure out where they want it. Uh, some people ask to come in and be fixers, and that's probably a more dramatic one, I advise kind of against that, only if, uh, what you're trying to do is consistent with where you're trying to get. And if we have that, with the vast culture, we can change that out, and things like that, so I think that could be kind of sensitive on one end and on the other. But what I would say, there are people that just know what they're doing and like to help, um, the public service is the word we call, and there are people that like to help, and to help the community, help the council, help the staff. Uh, be what they want, and the questions we'll ask you are, do you need some help with you? To have a, plus the bridge, the bridge to the interim. A lot of times, interims, they'll just go, they'll find out what's going on. And so when that transition real manager comes on, they can say, okay, this is what we worked on, this is what we did, there's some holes, there's some bright spots, you pay attention to this, that kind of thing. And, you know, if I'm coming in as the partner manager after that, that's very helpful. Uh, to, to, to know where things are. Um, so.
There's, there have been several things that have come up, and I've asked, and Ron has asked, what in the, how does this affect our group of customers? Because that's where my goal goes, good for my council, so that is going to work. So we are sensing how, I see that, that is. We are, we're conscious.
They will back us.
Oh, yeah, they're interviewing you. People make moves like this because they need it, and uh, they want it, and uh, there's lots of those trade-offs, so, yeah, they're, you don't need this much. So yeah, have an interim, do maybe help with, I love it, help shoot people up, do what you can, so, uh, council needs to be positive, what kind of help can we give them, do the job that they do, certain things. So that, I mean, that's really what that's about, keep the shift, or, Oregon has some funny little rules, you know, that is, uh, every state does, but Oregon has funny little rules, budget, funny little rules in management, those are the two areas. Then you have very little HR support, so that's the third wheel of what you got, the fourth one, I guess you'd be talking about, but um, you know, it's, those are the three things that you have to be conscious of.
I, I, I agree with Kai, Kai and I are, oh, I think it's to make sure these runs smooth, and not necessarily businesses always, I think we are interested in understanding everything from the purchasing policy to, um, what council wants for our company. And so we're open to that, we're open to discussions, but we also, you know, Kai's got a big job on the, I'd say, the other side of the river, a, a big group to, um, to manage, and so I can understand where that can be difficult. So we don't want anyone to think that we're trying to be out of work or not doing stuff, we just wanna make sure we do well.
Question is, what's the best? So staff, you want high child, not your car, which I don't find out the best way, and I think, I think you're like, the best thing for city management, we can't.
So, staff, you want to try, try to come, which I don't find out the best way, and I, I think, I think you're right, the best thing, considering, I think, we can't, you know, like, a lot. You know, it's, anyway, we can, uh, I can tell you that this is probably right. I found people who needed, you know, some, and you can talk, or, or, so, um, that's what it's been, it's not, anybody's, it's just like, well, first, I was just hoping to try to come. Can I have a drink, but it's back in five days. So, I mean, six months or about, we probably grew a lot smoother together, I just haven't been able to have a drink, but I did not see this happen. So, the amount of work we have, I mean, has, has been good, people respond, I am, I'm a little bit behind, I'm a little bit, that's why I was right. So, we try, I'm trying to balance that, uh, so, but, uh, if you want, if, you know, we're going to have some, we're going to have somebody, I'm sorry. We would hear. Great, any other questions, Scott?
Or, that's Laura, or Laura, Amber? Kind of, I'm only as good as the great people that I have, and these two are a part of that, Dean's part of that, Craig's part of that, both of them are working here. And, uh, they're probably just, they, uh, and people bite the off, and you put it in a format that you can proceed with, and, uh, both in video, and has, uh, less, uh, support.
Right, thank you. All right, okay, all right. Next, we have the Industrial Lands Project, the Set Core, uh, Adashaw, who is here, um, I believe, uh, yeah, you go here.
Hi there, yeah, I know that we have, have any counselors, so I invited Eric to come with me and make sure we're offering you a little bit of background on this project.
Yeah, big, uh, Eric Davis, I'm person at Set Core.
And I'm Howard Rasta.
Uh, thank you once again for patrolling, helping us to do this work. Uh, we're here, uh, looking at, um, and go through what we do, and, you know, it's getting, you know, the process started. Um.
We do have a power presentation, I think you want this. One of the people I've done yet, so.
Well, for us, in a nutshell, we're a forty, should be forty-three year old, uh, regional development organization, nonprofit. Uh, generally what we do is reach out to businesses, uh, traded sector, manufacturing businesses, and, uh, listen to what their issues are, what their needs are, and work with our partners. Uh, government, state government, other resources, occasionally council governments, uh, to help deliver, deliver our resources and, uh, provide opportunities, to provide them the tools that they need to grow, create jobs, and create investment. Uh, generally do business recruitment, business potential expansion, some entrepreneurial work, and, uh, it's a community development type work. That's generally as a result of what we're doing, which is, we're trying to see the government structure, or, we help workforce housing, um, we can be a partner, we can do, give others certain direction now.
Do you want me to go ahead, uh, proceed, progress, I guess, I guess, yeah, next slide.
Yeah, and we mentioned traded sector, and why we, you know, focus on the traded sector, basically manufacturing or anything that's creating value, uh, bringing value to the size of regions, that we're making something for us. Uh, the reason we do that goes to the better jobs, a little bit of manufacturing, uh, making sure we build factories, through, uh, salaries, many paid by the tax, and all the property factory. And it's that multi-layered, and, uh, when I look at the MR website, there's a, uh, video about how, you know, it's absolutely a really good job, it was mainly to generate links in the supply chain that add value to that house.
A rural Main Street hub in our area. We also did jump a little bit ahead into Phase Two and write a letter in partnership with the city that we have mailed out to the land and business owners to make sure that they were aware of why this person off the shop or sent for is reaching out to them about their property. And it seemed like maybe I was a land developer or someone that was just trying to harass them. So, we did get that letter out. It was well received. I have had folks contacting me already. I've had multiple meetings with land and business owners and I have many more set up in the coming weeks. For those of you that maybe just aren't as familiar with your industrial lands, there's a few maps in the room and I got the one up here just in case those maps were off the wall. The majority of your industrial land is on the west side of this map and it's all colored gray. Right? So you have the gray land there. You have some sort of southeast of the river. And then a couple of parcels sprinkled through the downtown core. But the majority of it is on the western side on your way out of Highway eighteen. So, a couple of things as we have been engaged in this process and working with the council of governments to understand the properties that we've identified. You have approximately three hundred fifty acres of industrial zones in land in Sheridan. Just over fifty acres of which is in the urban growth boundary, but it is unincorporated. So you see those white islands on the map in that gray area? They are industrially zoned and they, you know, appear to be within the urban growth boundary, but they're not incorporated. And that's always something to discuss if there are opportunities there. And it's about fifty acres of that in that unincorporated area. The largest undeveloped lot that sits within city limits is thirty-two acres, which is a decent sized lot. We look at kind of the average for a large industrial improvement. The low average, sorry, is about twenty acres. We have some high averages and we'll discuss that in future bases. But low average is about twenty acres, so you have a couple of parcels that satisfy that. We also identified there's quite a bit of residential use. This is a historical balance in that zone. So we have been reviewing the current presence of residential use in that area and trying to identify where there might be opportunities to transition to other uses or where maybe we could consider development that isn't immediately adjacent with those properties. We identified there's a significant problems of wooden basket recycling reuse type businesses in the area and we actually think this is something that the city of Sheridan should really be proud of and highlight as you're sharing the uniqueness of the trade sector industry culture within your area, right? There's a long history of this area being a timber community. Wood forest products are widely known for being produced in this area. But there is also a very deep reuse and recycle culture that exists here and that's really exciting for us. So those are just some immediate findings, things that I wanted to make sure that I'm sharing with you. So far, we have had a great relationship working with the council of governments and city staff. So we want to express that city staff and thank you Mayor George for your participation as well. Have been extremely helpful in this process, very responsive to our requests for support, requests for information, and we just really appreciate that. It's why we've been able to move things ahead on schedule. Based on all the findings to date, we do not have any recommendations for changing our approach to Phases Two and Three. This is a good thing, right? We are on track and in some areas, we're a little bit ahead even. So the next step will be the Phase Two engagement piece. And so that will be us reaching out more directly, working with the landowners and the business owners to identify opportunities for future use of their properties, whether it be them growing their businesses, potential opportunity for sale of property or development and preparation for sale of property. We also are working closely with business organs recruiting to get a good understanding of what future opportunities might exist for the city of Sheridan based off of land availability, utility availability, and all those other components, access to workforce that businesses are looking for. So that will ultimately lead into our final recommendation. Phase Two though will be that deeper engagement along with all of those partners. So that is all that I have to offer you today. Maybe there's one more slide. Oh, questions? Perfect. That's all I have to offer you today in terms of the update, but we are certainly available for any questions if you have them. Yes, or no?
What is the rural community?
Oh, that's really interesting. So the state's Main Street group has identified opportunities for rural communities to come together and create a hub. That hub would be the center of support and activity for all of the communities that participate in the hub to bring resources into those communities. So it's leaning into partnerships. We're in conversation with the state's Main Street group, communities, rural communities, the more rural ones, here around the county and also the council of governments to identify how we can partner to support something like that. And we're really centered. But it is a good way for, I would say, to centralize and combine resources in order to be more effective in bringing resources into communities to support Main Street projects. And these are the kinds of things that opportunities we identify when we do this work in partnership with the local business development groups. One of the conversations that I had at the Chamber of Congress was, you know, reminding us that even though our current focus on the industrial land project is on industrial lands, that trade sector businesses can exist anywhere, right? So again, you might have a downtown tap house that's not considered trade sector, but their brewery is, right? So if they're brewing next door, that's a trade sector business. And frankly, we hope that the work of this type lifts all those. So we're trying to work very closely with those companies.
If you don't get smaller community, the root that's high and the tester work that we're done on prior is a year in part of the Minnesota kind of industry. A lot of the time particularly smaller community having a viable tech field in the street is something that's driving the industrial. Any questions for?
Yeah, it's been. Actually. We're working on school district. Of the part of our project that we were just about. So I kind of had, coming into council, I was excited that September was completed. When I was mayor, I was. Could do, because I've seen them doing it. Excited we're working where we are on Phase Two.
That's right. Thank you. First year.
Okay. Now. Moved up. Grants. So. Yeah, that is. Nice stuff.
Monica Spencer contacted me and the Art Institute was applying for an award of a grant for the Lion Dance for the twenty twenty-four Summer Art Program. However, they didn't receive the grant until after the dancers were here, like well after their event. So she would like to know from council if they could apply that money to some adult art class. Adult art class program. At the bridge line, seven and ten.
To the west. Side of, rewarded them.
I don't know what she didn't say what like, she just said that they applied for money to have the, um, this cost on their, um, summer program. Um, Summer Art Program.
And they already received the money?
They received the money, but they received it well after the event. So they still have the money and they want. The adult art class program that they have.
That might be a question for State here, but I believe they can do that. I don't know. That would be a question for State if they need approval or less than.
I don't think so unless there's a strong objection from the council, which I can't imagine. No, we gave them that money to use for some kind of a program. I think this would still fit as far as like the gallery goes. No, no. It's completely fine unless there's an objection. It's still an art. Yes.
You know, I heard you said that as long as they give some back. Nobody would think about that party. Right. Usually putting in the purpose. And that our fact. Right. I was curious why they didn't reimburse themselves or whoever.
I don't know. She said that they received it well after the event. So they had the payment in front for the line.
So what I'm seeing is.
I just brought forth what she asked me to do.
I can. I can look for you. But if the military's objective is allowing them to use that money for that, I guess.
I would also say. We already approved money for that. Your group's getting the money, whatever.
It's a big program.
It's fair, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think it's very kind and I know mom has, she's very, like, I was just from the financial standpoint. It's very kind of her to want to make sure that she appropriated those funds exactly how they were designated. But as far as our concern, like I said, unless there's a very strong objection, they are paid it. That is the reimbursement to her. I think she's just looking at, does she have those funds right now? Can we use these for this? Because, you know, that's already done. So, but we really look good.
Yeah, she just wants to make sure.
Absolutely. Although I am.
Okay, so. Not at all. Okay. I think Monica's the one thinking that.
No, she just wants.
Exactly right. Perfect. Is there any thoughts of the three applicants we were seeing? Looks like we only have. We have nine hundred this quarter because we're using. Oh, I read it backwards. Sorry. Okay, so we have sixteen hundred. So, okay.
Each answer. That's the one. We've got sixteen hundred and three. I will see. Branding their question. Next time around, you know, somebody else. When you have five, six people. I didn't say the high stories, but I'll probably go discussion.
I'm going to award the Sheridan community funding briefs to whole counties. Sheridan, by all vision, Sheridan. You have five hundred dollars?
First and second, any other discussion? Great, all over. All right, that's enough. All right, great. Okay, moving on. Now we have the consent agenda. Yeah, put your. Okay, yeah, it starts on page three.
I have one question. Is well pavement? What is that?
It's on page.
It's on page.
Well, on what instrument? On some city problem. It was proximity to the river. Investigated for irrigation. And recharge. Really low status. And it would cost. Pretty heavy. We were having a pretty true book. So it was a. I didn't know.
We didn't either.
And, um, we have asked about, you know, fifteen weeks ago there. The five hundred fifty dollars. Flight for. Either get a new flight for all or maybe repair. Repair, that's.
We know a bit or?
No, it had an internal issue. So we'd actually, we tried. With our group truck, we could not figure it out. Ended up getting a comment done inside. It was literally around those. Could have scaled it and did understand. We'd never opened it up before, so we didn't understand. It was a part of. You know, I usually give it to me very thoroughly. I just had some issues with that. I looked at the report itself and talked to State about this and the other. Cannot be quite the way it should, but I definitely. It's a little progress and I think everyone chose their. Still been changing as we go along.
It really is. And one thing that I would like to, I guess, offer or to ask the council is, if there is something that you are wanting to see on these reports or something that you don't want on these reports, you really find it unnecessary, please tell me. Um, I can try to work. I can't promise, but I can do my best to work on it. One modification that you might have been working on and I have in progress with Tyler Tech right now is the formatting of these reports. I am putting in all of this information for you to see, but when it prints, it cuts it off. And so we're trying to find a way to reformat the margins so that you can see what those purchases are in full, not per side words. So that is also work in progress.
We tried that.
So it does, but it turns into a crazy, wonky mess. So we're also working on that. We're working on our options to see what the best ways.
I don't think we need to see. I mean, there's one, so sure, a lot of them, federal contact. It's kind of a line number that we can't even look at, that we don't need to do because there's a cover. But then the payment was just, there's no line to one person to look at. I really just saved a paper and. I can't figure it out.
So I appreciate if I'm not necessarily needing that money and that typically it would never be on this report. All of my payroll liability reporting is separate. This was a new learning experience for us in Tyler as we were, again, enabling one of the best reports. You give you guys to show you everything. Well, this time you got everything. You've got it all. So moving forward, that will not be in there because we do not need those published for other reasons, payroll related. So it shouldn't be on. Correct. So we found that out and I apologize and it will not be on yours. I mean, you got it all.
I don't, I didn't see it expensive here for your college. You know that.
I'll work on that. All right.
I'm a little bit curious on patient's theme about anonymous purchase of the wire heater and Christmas.
So I will comment on part of that and then I'm going to give you another question, because I don't know anything about wire heaters. Um, however, the Christmas report was a request to be purchased by the.
It was supported.
I didn't, I didn't participate actually.
It's one of the waters.
Yeah. It leaked all of it. You gotta be inside. The other questions? I'm in it, sir, the.
I very much appreciate my coffee. Anything else for you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first and second, the other discussion on it. Okay, all right, all over. All right, let's see others. Moving on to department reports. First one is Sheriff's Report on page three. Okay.
I just, this is just a comment, but it seems like rural areas and large areas are way up. Like concerned and it's affecting personally and just kind of mind. I was wondering, is there any other?
Yes.
There is. Who are they and what are they doing?
I believe, um. I know, first thing starting. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if it. And, you know, that was the end of the year, so that's, you know, twenty twenty-four recap. But yeah, I see what you're saying, but it looks definitely. But we didn't have any. But yeah, I know.
I want to think. I have, I would previously get a dis report from last week. Breaks down the number of, uh, exactly. You know, I saw a, I go to a lot of. Forty-six traffic stops, maybe that was. Down one bit of town. And I don't know what civil paper is. And then the DHS is part of.
Uh, it's usually, it's the lead. Yeah, I didn't want to. It's, it's more than just for. And I believe one of the officers we talked to, I asked about the DHS. Sometimes DHS actually doesn't go, sometimes it's officers.
Maybe that was. I believe there are lumberjack. So hopefully we're able to.
It looks like they just got our detail. Let's hope just for this year, this for twenty-four. I know they were doing twenty-four. Good. The other, one last one that. Okay. Move on to finance director. Reports. That is a. And we've got. Assuming it's, assuming it's because of Tyler and.
Can we just call it tie tech?
I really love Tyler.
Uh, just TT. So he's, this, uh, Tyler Tech envisioned also. I believe I've talked about.
Yes, and the goal was, and I did talk council and I believe it was November, January was, there was going to be one report and I unfortunately have just not been able to get it completely tied out yet. I have been extremely busy with audit and some other projects that are a little tighter priority audit than this report. So I do apologize. We are getting very close. And you will then have one budget. However, again, council members have come to me with some questions on the budget, reading it, because the tie tech report has some columns that we're not actually doing. It's just how the reporting is. So I really would want feedback. I don't like this column. I don't like this column. I would be want this instead. This budget report, uh, this is the one that divides your annual budget and twelve. Is this the right one that we're looking at?
Yeah.
It is. And that is just something the system did. And so when I go in and I think I think the very best report for you guys, um, this one prints out and says, you know, four hundred forty-five dollars, whatever it is. And that is your annual budget divided by twelve and it's just saying you're going to be spending equal amounts every month. That's just something that's popular. It's a very, um, I don't want to say fictitious number. It's just saying that's your annual divided by twelve in that month and hour.
How do we get this? TT into considering annual. The one that stood out in that topic that would be, uh, real simply made an impense of salary. Forty-five dollars in the sense of, you know, I get, it should be five hundred fifty because everybody has five hundred.
Yeah, you do this.
And it's eventually there.
Yes, I know. Um, and so again, like I said, I have something Jim is very good about giving me that feedback. I am open to report feedback. I want to be able to give you a report that you just want to see. So if I know what you like, what you don't like, that would be amazing.
Also, uh, the general fund revenue was apparition. I mean, it goes to five dollar expenditure or twenty, whatever it would be. A lot of zero there.
Exactly. And they're not, I believe those would be shown on the other report and that's part of the time how between the two and I have to go account by hand and make sure each entry is. Have a lot of, it's a lot of back work in that sense, but it'll be absolutely worth it when it's done and then presented the format of the reports. That's an extra copy.
Danny.
Thank you. I think it's technically. I just have a question on revenue.
I don't have that. I actually gave my packet to Tyler. Thank you so much. I apologize. Okay, so that is something that I'm not sure why it has to be that great. However, I will drill down into that account not the extra. I'll drill just enough to, to find where, where that extra came from. Exactly. It could be something like that. So I will look at.
Anybody else?
Yes, and you're in back. So we're up to the library record.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
So that's on fifty-nine.
Then we skip up the work. It's a way, it was a meta ties.
This is something you too, because it's webinar, so. Yeah, we. There's Gwen.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
No. Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Council, how are you all this evening?
Start the new year.
Yeah. Did you have any questions on what was on the report?
Gwen, I didn't have any questions, I know it's, uh, computer usage, I didn't, I didn't get to start the last one, so it was probably a stop a little bit, and then your door rang, it was facing, it was like a two and a half, but it's two, it seems like the library is almost the house of the city, but it's big, uh, that we got a year before it, but it's one thousand two hundred and twenty eight, uh, checkouts in the rooms, that sounds fantastic.
Yeah, for only being open a hundred and three hours, that was right on par, pretty average of what we've been doing, um, so I was pleased with that. Are you there?
Yeah. It was just, it's simply that.
Oh, gotcha. Well, I wanted to let you know too that we had, uh, this past week, we had Head Start come in and with all prep, they both brought, uh, for some of their debt to to run the library and to do a storytime and prep, um, which has led to them asking for us to provide that monthly for them. So we're very excited about that.
Were all prepped with that there, like, um, uh, like their positive left for their, um, which out there.
It was for their K through five.
Oh.
So. We're excited to have them in the building once a month and. Enjoying the library.
Rick, any questions for? Okay. All right, thank you, Gwen.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have. The question is a little left.
But, uh, under, I'm sorry, fifteen, uh, he showed, he's coming out with a trailer, and that cost is, uh, five thousand three hundred eighty dollars, that's what it was, so. You can go to the end of, uh, and, of course, you see these gaps, but. Not there yet, but it will be. Try to commit these, eight or eight, to get there. Yeah, we've got the eight more pending tow, plus other few that, that they're gonna need filling, and they're, they're gonna afford itself, we're just gonna be out of money, whatever is going in, probably gonna sit there for longer than until we get more money for that, and then you get a tow and portion. Five thousand dollars of tow, I think, on a severe.
Well, that, I think, from what I understand too, that, the, the cost depends on, you know, size of the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, one day, and then we got a.
Or some motor.
Yeah, that's what I would say, there's, uh, there's still, and that money goes to, we think we need to get that stuff taken care of, but well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna figure out, yeah, there you go. Well, and like you said, Jay, I think they, you know, we do have some of those, there's a, we're a whole trailer, or a horse trailer, so those would be the, the cost, but for our, I mean, how, yeah, we're just, uh, keep the pressure, hopefully, um, we get around to it, what it's like, uh, to, we, we can have a full, full money in the end of this year. Well, yeah.
I guarantee that, you know, it's, you know, having, then a garage, or, or, in, 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 it's gonna be, it's, or, twelve hundred sixty dollars, and it's concerning to me that we're siding, uh, people that are storing, making, on their property, in the mirror, uh, probably, uh, in a, in the mirror, that is not, like, disrupting the, or disrupting. You know, I see, let's see a little there, and it, and I think we should be considering. Not in part, especially considering the elements, just. Wonderful, you know, something wild, we should keep that, uh, with the minister.
So the actual fines levied are levied by the US judge, who is not, who personally came to perjudicial, casted in perjudicial decision by the council, but I do know that Judge Buculis is her first line of attack is not, like, she worked very hard to. As far as living, I believe you can live in, or, or a, um.
True.
Yeah, um, it's on the property, I believe, or is it, does it have to be in the driveway, thought it had to be on the driveway or on gravel, or, or that's why I think, like.
And we change the first year on part of the, of the balance.
That's, uh, on the yard, or, or, because of act of the, but that's a, uh, permit, then, when that, when it starts made, one or made for, yeah, it's later in the year, but, yeah, but, um, yeah, from what I, all I know, we haven't had many, my, sort of, so, yeah.
I agree that, the only thing I would point out though, is the judge doesn't make a decision on, on the decision that we have operating, then make a decision, that makes sense, because we're not letting you find.
And if we aren't letting you find, we're, we're, we need to just change the code.
Right, we already don't, of course, part of our code, by the very nature of not being able to have the code for the office, you know, already, of course, very simple thing, so, we, what I'm saying is, I think that we should examine what our priorities are, that's it.
Anything else to listen to? Rick. Next. AJ, for you. City report.
I'm way boring, so that's, that's, that's good, I like one right now. But, um, I did do a new meeting that went on calendar, because there was a typo found, and so I left it in each of your person's box, if you wanna pull up that one, or revisit it, or whatever, um, I just wanna make sure that that's as active as you can do this, or you're finding a code on that one, so. Um, but another activity right now in the grant track, is, um, just one, I think, on colors, was name change on the C D D G, or, or, that were painted, so, otherwise it's kind of quiet on the way up.
Well, we, eventually we'll all, we'll, our, uh, uh, show up there, will that be tracked and stuff like?
Um, I think we, we will get to use our new software, we have new software that's, um, project accounting grant software, but I can't retroact the old ones, um, into that system, because they are moving forward, so I'm hoping that we're gonna get a, put those in there and actually use that, cause that'd be awesome, you'll get to actually see the projects within that grant, and, as that grant.
Just, um, looking at the, like, just, see, it'll start, January twenty, like, three, or twenty one, but, now, that was just gonna be, uh, extended.
I think you need to cut that more, it's thin, that's something you were always working on.
Yeah, I was, yeah, we, we extended it.
I'm not showing it, did you, like, did you hear, for what kind of, uh, you think, you know, um, I'll leave you with examples, what you have here, in the, uh, C D D two one, you get the government, and then, and then, forty three thousand, and then, or whatever, and then, down here, under expenses and federal revenues, there's some different numbers, because we spent some money, but over, on the left, at eight, eight, four, and then, on our, you spent some money, there's an expense though, but it's just those federal revenues, one thou, or one million, and I think, um, I don't get, what, what you spent, what it's gonna be.
So that's, um, so the, on that article, that's the Yanho County Arco line, it's not the.
Right, not the.
Right, right, and so, um, so they, uh, sub-grant to us, um, on that line, and so, the, at the bottom of, where it says four, or twenty twenty two Yanho County, and, um, it lives in our L G I P fund, and the one million dollars, so that was a total that we have in there, and then the expense total, we spent, I, I, I couldn't have something that's like, bound, a, a balance, kind of like I did on the thing for the, uh, community grant awards, I couldn't have something in there that.
I would.
Kind of shows where we stand.
I would really like to.
The one million plus the sixteen thousand.
I've given, just, I mean, just like, I can't, actually, talk.
Yeah, cause then you have to actually do, yeah, I have no problem, I wasn't the creator of these spreadsheets, but I, when I was doing the one for the community grant, cause I thought you guys might appreciate the theme where we were, especially after the other thing, I thought, I'm gonna just show where you're at overall, for both the fiscal year and the quarter, so, um, I, I can definitely do that on the grant track, especially using one manual one, since it's prior to the new system.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yeah. I'm really looking a lot to see, for our break.
Let's have one. Page ninety three, we got, uh, today's, uh, night. Report covers twenty, thirty, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, five, twenty three.
That's nice. We have.
We just haven't gotten any of these applications after. If any questions about. Okay, then, we will move on then to, we're considering resolutions. Uh, first one we have, resolution twenty five dash A, resolution adopting updated overhead standards. Would this be less?
Do you wanna add a question?
Proactive, this, this is such a huge, uh. What's that, Ian, do you, like, similar thing? All right.
Go ahead. Move to the third resolution, twenty twenty five dash A, where's the mission dropping?
Second. Okay, first and second, any discussion on it? Great, all right, all favor? All right, that's the end.
I'm just very happy that we have made this point, I'm less happy, I'm sure, than I, are, are, that we, that we, that we, that we, that we watch.
Right, and very. All right, next, we have new business, um, the discussion in vote, new one, Valley Council Government's interim recruitment services. So, it says interim and recruitment, so maybe, talk about the interim first, um, I, uh, you know, I do like, you know, working with Guy as the acting city manager, but I do understand that, you know, that is, when he's here, he's not, he's a director, you know, he's a, a director. It sounds like getting an interim will be fairly quick, I know, Kai, a lot of them, you know, rate so hard, but, and they're also like, they're, they're regular duties, um, and, you know, sometimes, in, interim, it could be for periodized, and sometimes the interim could be the, the permanent, if they apply the, 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 um, but it, everybody thinks there's, you know, somebody not wanting to. Not wanting to. Good. Well, it's, it's discussion of vote, I do believe we do need to, to vote at least possibly.
I think the only apple was, would be, uh, the, 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 services.
Yeah, and it, and it could be expensive, but kind of like what they said, I believe it was Amber, she said, you know, that they, they had costs, they, that's enough, you know, ten hours of work, but Amber's, which is only four, ten hours, um, of that already, was one of the best, that, that is definitely something to consider, it's gonna be costly, but, as far as the school board for, for assisting us, especially once we have an interim mentioned, although the cost of an interim, we can base it on contract negotiations, and they're a person, so, uh, more costly, uh, Jim?
Oh, I heard Kai say, he would appreciate editing, and it, it looks scary enough, and look, the price of the show here, that it's not working, those twenty hours, you know, that, 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 now, the cost isn't, they're not rating it, you know, I think, I think, uh, it would be good for us, you know, without finding a, uh, I can back to the, 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 city hall, but, but, I said, that, they would be able to, not like, train the city managers, but, help them, uh, so they, whatever they do as, yeah, I would, I would, even, even, uh, I would, I would, I just wanna make sure, I'm sure about that, that she's gonna train somebody, help somebody else, and so, I'm probably about equal on interim, um, as far as the support that she ought to provide, uh, so, she, her, her, I don't, I don't agree, I'll support city manager, I haven't shared, getting back, uh, but I'd fall down, and, uh, I think.
I don't know, like, yes, but, is, is it gonna be compensated, something after work, we do, so, we, that's like, well.
Yeah, you're right, you can do that, yeah.
The, yes, yes.
Yeah. I've just done some stuff on type having fun, cause I've got the university tactics, like, I mean.
I mean, we're.
Branded, and, I don't know, version legal, uh, action item, discussion.
They look very good.
Yeah, they do.
Uniform.
I, I, that's my thing, is I'm being very uniform, so I'm kind of obsessed with both of that, like, somebody finds a statement, so, I'm sorry, but, it's, some stuff, it's kind of, um, it's kind of funny, just be able to, I guess I don't need that, anybody knows, I'm just gonna do it, and see what I think, so, yeah, there's a few things that, it might be more of a, but it is.
As far as the interim goes, then I think we'll, um, probably involve, will, um, probably Tyler, who, 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 getting us there, um, as far as the recruitment services, um, there, as Scott said, there are other, uh, people who we recruit, um, Todd is definitely one of them, um, me and Kai talked, um, and it looks like for Jensen's strategy, they're, they're another major recruiter, too, yeah, and Dayton just used them, if they're sitting there, uh, although it looks like, what we paid with this, what they, this is what we paid last, so, Kai got the numbers for last time, this is back in twenty one, so. Total paid to Jensen's strategy, I believe about twenty six thousand dollars, so, back in twenty one, was, it was more than what the cog returns now, we could get an updated estimate from Jensen, uh, I did attend a meeting with, um, some of the other Yanho County mayors, uh, last week, and most of them, uh, have used Jensen and liked the services that they, that they received, uh, for the while, I had used the cog, um, so we, we, we have some options, but, Jim?
Well, at the time, that we were trying to, um, find a, for your, your, your manager, for whatever reason, we got one, that, 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 couldn't do it, it was over, and I've got the Scott, that he can get it, not the case, and it's not here, so, so, I'm gonna give a quick, stories about that, because we thought we wanted to talk, if we're, if we're, some, like, cheaper, but, and, taking it down over to, uh, Jensen, I was very impressed with the.
I'm sure I'll be back. Counsel had said that that was not a big priority for Sherwood Road. You've got some other five projects, you've had other priorities, so that would not fall back. That's why I brought it to you. It's one of the ways to stay alive and healthy. So counsel will have to deal with it. We have to counsel. I've referenced a few projects. We've, I, I, I mentioned in my last report about the progress, that's what we're doing. These programs have been largely ignored in Sherwood Road. Entire half my thing. We won't get around Sherwood, so. We're pushing to enforce those codes. And the reason being is it costs revenue. We don't have to see, we don't have to see some companies do. We can have small jobs, but good jobs. We don't have the $750,000. I'll go back to our trip. We have one between 1985. And it does a great job, but it's not a big task. Some of the things we ask of it. We're gonna make the most, we got a technical shot here again. But, the reason I bring that up is I think we're gonna have to get control. Business owners and, you know. Are having issues that are costing us. Sounds like a pretty important.
Yeah. So it's restaurant.
Those are so. Isn't this picture the gap year course? Were they, you get a citation? No, I, I, I think we're gonna go, yeah, points. I did some, I'm hoping someone says education. So I mean, we talked to them as we're going through this process. They're clean, you know, they have race traps. So most of these places have race traps, and we forced them to install race traps in the past. The issue is, I suspect, that they're not being maintained. So what that falls on is, right here. Public Works is here to serve, so whether we're doing that or something else, I have that. Focus on that, on what we're doing, because we serve public no matter what, but the cost of the rate.
Under previous city administration, full enforcement, I thought the policy would be to send that without contact first. And you know that there was some changes with that, the uselessness of that message out. But I was, I was wondering, are we doing, you know, in the legal organization. And the recommendation, very specifically said, we should try first of all, like you said, with education. And in contact first, and say, we believe that is the mission. And I think that, that sounds like, where are we? Yeah, we, it is telling initially that, hey, this is an issue. You will probably, you know, can you fix it please? Maybe we'll do it.
Absolutely. If you're gonna have the opportunity. At first contact, we're not gonna use code for that, we need public works. We have the information, we have the knowledge. Where Angela, she, you're right, she's fantastic. Angela can help, just educate public works, she needs to do her job. So I, my, my vision is, is that public works, when we first contact, we'll do our public information. We'll ask people, see if their law status is being followed, how to maintain that. If they're otherwise quiet, we'll have to review, and see what issue might be, and if they're not, give up the know. Kind of pressure, this is costing me here, this money. And if it continues to be an issue, that's probably, I don't know, is how often, how frequently she wants to check. You know, they do things like that, so she, if she has to say, one of the four, she can't be. That's the piece of legal work a lot, like, always people outside of their chosen profession don't always know what they need. And that's the piece that I want to give them. Is help me exactly what she needs, trust me, if they're in the works.
Just want to come up in the council, can we ensure that it goes through our training or whatever she needs? Do that, drop them off your same apartment, to include, ask our charter, charter, that says, there are. Have to lock up the doors. For all purposes, business. And I, I want to make sure that this year, or ensure she puts the policy into place. Send it to their, that are appropriate. I, I would actually, or I would say, I agree, I just, okay. So we have talked around that. She's a story, she's got some offer, she's been, I think, very competent in the city. I think that we can add ten years ago, I certainly understand that. And then one last thing I started to say, is that, you and I spoke through a brief meeting about community response measures. And, and rest of the city. Or each, we can ensure that our city employees, that we have still, have, have opportunity to go to work. By, by that, there's some, there is certain, certain needs. Supplies, for their needs, or for us, that are.
That's absolutely right, because we know it's not. I think that's, yeah. And we're seeking outside, I think I mentioned that to you, but I struggled with that a little bit, to help handle that. So we'll reach out to another partner.
So what is the, that sewer spill that was going down the river from the, behind the high pathway? Can I go back and I saw a, that it was going down the river? Is that, just, what, what, how that whole scenario, you know, back there, it smells and everything like sewer?
Sewer smell.
I can understand the wanting to cite open sewers, but I, but I'm happy to explain it.
So, we had a backup there. I don't know the exact cause of that, but had some telltale signs. Free stretch. So we did report that supposedly to you.
I see that you got a spot for it back in the river, but it'd be a pretty far down track.
As far as, not much, it's safe.
Well, I saw it.
Oh, oh, I, I got it. So that, that's it, we, you know, we did our SSO report, which is, staff here sewer, we're prepared to be here. And we did our best to clean it up. And, and then.
Did it bust that night, that was right over the ground? Doesn't make, look, I, I assume it was a sewer.
They were trying to find ways to access. And that was one of the ways, so they just take. Yeah, it's interesting, yeah. So it was already coming up. It was already coming up, probably, yeah. But somebody was attempting to, you know, see if they could.
Was that made up?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So it possibly, then that, so that's our, I, like, you know, the, inside the building, and that would be the block, and every, kind of, kind of clean that up. I mean, kind of makes.
That's, that's a long, long ladder. You know, and it's pretty flat, like, you know, I did some, the ground conditions, in the heat of that, well, we did that. But it's, it's something that we talked, you know, so.
And what was going on, I shared with you, and that's pretty, I, how this lot was, like, white, with, with, the, 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 same day.
I, what, I didn't have, it was deep, I don't know, so.
And that's why I told the guy that they think, that bad, he's out there, maybe, I don't know, maybe. It was sitting in place, so.
Yellowback, yellowback, you know?
It was, I just kind of was watching.
Yeah, Jake and Jared did that. We, we also had a back truck here for another reason, so we'll tend to use them, they have minimal allowance, so we like to add up as much stuff as we can. So if we have a side job, we'll, we'll put on that job. It's a forum, so they have, work that, or if you put on a side job. It could have been that, but I know public works, I know specifically Jake and Jared.
I know that it was same day, so I just, I didn't think it was related to the kind of walk, and they have.
It was, but I thought the same thing. I saw, yeah, I thought, I thought a back truck was still, so I thought, yeah. Yeah, the other question for, like, the, so I'm gonna be rounding the whole first, before you figure out. I'm not that, oh, yeah, good. Oh, go ahead. Oh, downtown project, so that's wrapping up. We started the punch list. To, to the, to the Lockwood Thursday, on Hill Street, you know, downtown. What that punch list entails, we'll look for some of the smaller details, look at the plans, make sure the contractor do what he's supposed to do. Make sure we're always ready to do this, we're getting out, that's the thing. That project is a weird, kind of a weird project. It's, all the grates are existing, right, so all your hard surface elevations are already there, so your streets at this level, your sidewalks at this level. And you can't change it that much, because you're not estimating down, you're not overexing the road, you're dealing with what's already there. So that project is not gonna be perfect. It's probably as close as we could have gotten. There was a few things with engineering. We didn't have enough shots on the grade, coming up the buildings. We don't know where the pile of floors on the building, on the header building, patch. So there was a few things, you know, wonky, I wouldn't say, on that project, you're probably gonna want better. But with the information we have, and the money we have, I'm satisfied with, so. There's a few things that need to be completed. Overall, quality wise, there were the.
I, for public record, I didn't know. Here, public works there. A series of pictures. That I took of sidewalks, and I still don't know that I had concerns about it, and showed it. And then, as you say, still haven't yet, did find the block, but I was a little concerned also with the amount of time. I did take a lot of pictures, and I wanted to work as it's going on. And I saw what we mean, and I wore gloves and. And actually, I think, as you were saying, the, the pieces that it connects, connects portions over and all that, that all actually seem to be, you think, good. In fact, it's not the stairs. So the new stuff is actually, seems straighter, a little muddled up. The, my problem primarily was with a lot of concrete, and, and just that were very poor, they should have done. I don't know, honestly, what I've ever did, but I'm sure, you know, trace those things. Primarily the thing that I was concerned about was the points in the concrete, so we couldn't point. You know, which one of them, three, the stand, the, 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 I was. Forgot, so I would certainly, you know, I'm a lot, I'm a lot, designing.
That's typically what happens, you walk the job.
What exactly you got? The bus model?
So, yeah, downtown.
Yeah, I understand. So I, I, I had a concern.
Sure.
I, what the other question, I was, I was asking. I was really asking. I like the idea.
Yeah.
But I don't.
Yeah, you're still gonna get, you're still gonna get that last little bit, that was in between the stamps, and then you're still gonna have that rest, and everything pointed out with the concrete. And it still needs to be washed, pressure washed, trimmed, and a lot of this, there's this whole other step left, and a lot of this, we, a lot of this. So I, I will, yeah, I will.
It's in the.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, anybody that, I think, loves, you know, it's five. I think you're pretty, you know, if anybody's very interested, have me watch it.
I guess I could pour the pictures out, everyone else now, they were.
Yeah, they're, they're very good pictures, too, definitely. That's good, no, that's good, that's good. Our problems, so, we talked about earlier, those have been secured, who's trying to figure out the best way to spin those down? That is great. So that is what we're working on currently, we're trying to avoid, gain that 10% administration fee in August, actually, hopefully do that as well. So Todd's been great with, we've got a lot, so hopefully we can figure out a way, we have a path, we still.
I think the work set in February, they're gonna have, might be that.
So the product is on schedule for February, it's, we're caught up, several staff members are working on that. Space has been great, she's really flexible. So it's been nice to have, it's taken a lot of staff. So she's been, she's been alert. But, yeah, so far, it was good. City fleets, I totally, you guys know, we have a Kodiak dump truck, it's down, that's, that, that, our dump truck. Our Kodiak trucks, we've had our state truck, a lot, a lot of use. Ten years ago, it was a little hollow truck, the city was smaller. And anyway, it's down right now, and so we're down, our dump truck. Jet router, has some tough issues, we're gonna get that with, uh, our diesel truck, and the city hauler truck is down as well. And I made a call, it's a lot of building, ground six, it's not really much, I didn't want to let you into it. But we did. And that was, I didn't raise a call, I didn't get a camera, I didn't get it. I wanna make sure, for the part of thousand bucks, I did forty, twenty-one, and he said, absolutely not. It's $1850. So, you know, so I, it's my. I was a little tempted to do the previous, to see if I could, we thought that I, we were, we'd get, get right back, like. I didn't come with that one.
Are, are you talking about Equinox?
I'm a little Ford Ranger, I'm a little Ford Ranger. I didn't know that you were mentioning, we sort of, city whole week was not the code. In this Equinox, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I guess we share that.
Yeah. I think my name is fine about it, yeah, the Equinox is mostly a, and because we have a part range, it's, I'll be.
Let's talk to him, we're gonna hear more questions.
You want to, second, second topic period, you want to begin anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, and then a little on, Eric, how's the comments? You wanna go first? Ian, you can go first.
I'm sure, this one said, read something real quick. This is. All right, this is from Mount Angels Falls. City will focus on public, it's important, it's been in addition, the pride of this section, streets foster employee retention, increase the average longevity, some staff. Complete profit station study, call staff positions, budget for employee performance, value of cost per month, cell phones, to accomplish. And to improve, create benefits such as, quick appreciation, or communication. I think it's important for us to have, find this system in this country, and do that, and foster that, and, and part of it, part of it, you know, important, most of the important. And I think that we need to ensure that the employees are satisfied with the work they do, and that they're coming to work in the sake, happy, and that they can. Entertain opportunities to address reasons directly to the capital. There needs to be a method, uh, to do that, from, just as, when I was in the hearing board, there was a method for, the modus operandi, to request nets, which means that you can go straight to the capital. And say, this is my issue, I would like to come, okay? And I think that that's something that we should adopt here, so that, that they, and we can do one here, and there, and maybe there's a method, which, uh, HR or something, I don't know, to figure out how we're, like, the law. I think there needs to be a method for, that city employees can do that. And I think we need to mention, again, properly, and fairly properly, and supply of product.
There was, there was a study, it's related, study that finished, yeah, the culmination of it was at the end of 2023, and then, that new study was adopted in the, 2024, and you need contract.
Then it.
Every position in the city was evaluated at that point, yeah, yeah. It was not in expensive, you know, I wanna say it was like nine, or between six and nine, you have them, you do that, because they go to, they do all the, to all the cities similar size. No, it was not, it was to, L, L, government, yeah, and the one that's down, L, L cars. Side of it, and they have like, they come back out to, so. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I mean, well, I'll, I'll be in on their computer file.
This is.
So do you guys, so we, we, we're up here, not necessarily, I think, specifically, just, I was just, I'm trying to make sure that I'm expressing the things that I.
Is one of, is this one, you want to just, that's pretty now?
Uh, yeah. Maybe, maybe, that's a good work set. Well, yeah, okay, Liz.
Um, I have a few items that people want to come up with, so, um, there, Ed, S T U's would like to see, I don't know if this can happen, so I wanna be able to, you know. But he'd like to see a bench where that hunk of this, is that legal, where you can put a bench, draw a hunk of? He'd like to see a bench for people that are walking, I'll be able to, they have a place to sit and rest, they're downtown, and, um, and of course, people that, and that's, and, and. If I do bring that up, I don't know if our, our, our plan was that, when we talked about our, our, we, we, we.
Well, they.
Okay, and then, and why?
It even creeped in.
But it's more.
Yeah, because it actually sets the tone.
Right.
That's not, actually, like. Uh, your parts, that's, like, make that decision, it's fierce. Operation, like, yeah, they're, right, so we have to, we have to maintain them, we have one more.
Right.